Okay, good evening, everyone, and I'd like to call the joint meeting of the Rockport Board of Selectment and the Board of Health to order. And this, we will be meeting again next Tuesday, correct? We've gone down once a week. But with the Board of Health, so again, I want to start the meeting by thanking everyone in the town for taking this pandemic as seriously as people have. The town, I think, has done a nice job navigating the uncharted waters. So thank you to everyone. And everyone really appreciates all everyone's efforts to keep our town safe. So let's go on to, we'll start with the Board of Selectmen, approval of minutes. Is there a motion for the approval of minutes of May 26, 2020?
Denise?
You want to do it, Ruth? I'm opening it on my phone.
I move that the board approve the minutes of May 26, 2020.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, vote. Selectmen George?
Aye.
Selectmen Donley?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Thank you. Moving on, moving right along, 134 Long Beach lease to reflect a change in ownership. Is there a motion? That'd be you, Sarah.
Is that me? I don't have the motions.
Yeah, I'll take it. I moved the, no problem. I moved the Board of Selectmen to approve and sign a lease for 134 Long Beach with Brenda and Kevin Gillis, trustees of the K and B Family Trust of 27 Wyman Street Burlington, Mass. to reflect the family change in ownership.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that. Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call, vote. Selectmen Donley?
Aye.
Selectmen George?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Okay, moving right along to number three under B, and this is a sad occurrence, but the acceptance of a resignation of Dr. Sidney Jimenez from the Rockport Board of Health. Is there a motion?
I moved that the board accept the resignation, accept the resignation of Dr. Sidney Jimenez from the Board of Health effective June 30, 2020.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
A second.
Moved in second, and well, first of all, just like to thank Sadie for all her hard work on the Board of Health. She will be missed. I understand she has a lot of job commitments with the hospital and clinic she works at, so we certainly understand it, but maybe she'll join another board down the road. So if we could send a letter at some point, I know we're busy with COVID stuff, but when things settle down, as an appreciation from the Board of Selectmen, that would be helpful. Anyone else have anything to say?
I just want to say she's been an invaluable asset, and I've learned a lot from her. Her community focus and her clinical wisdom have been outstanding and have helped lead our Board of Health, and has been incredible asset to improving the health of our community. So I just want to give her a hearty thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Cohen.
I also want to say she's done a great job. I mean, I've been the lease now for a year and a half, and just stepped up to the plate and been great. And I hope, I hope as family commitments sort of slow down, maybe she can come back in another capacity to help us.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, just to add it, just to, I mean, additionally, I think we always kind of joke that we have like an embarrassment of riches on town boards and committees, but Board of Health is, is one of the leaders of that. And I don't know if, you know, with the pandemic, we could not be luckier to have the entire Board of Health. So thanks to Sadie and thanks to, you know, to the entire Board of Health for all of their hard work.
Agreed.
And at the risk of sounding redundant, I'm sorry, at the risk of sounding redundant, I'll echo all of that. I won't go into the greatest detail because everybody said really who have a more intimate knowledge of her work, like Ruth and others than I do, but anybody who steps up and gives their time and service to the town is worthy of any praise and adulation when the, when the career stops, hopefully temporarily at this time.
Well said. Thank you, Sadie, and again, we'll, we'll send out a appreciation letter at some point. Roll call, vote. Selectmen Donley?
Aye.
Selectmen George?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0. Okay, let's go on to number four. Consideration of the DPW Administrative Area Buildout. Is there a motion?
Um, yes. Let me preface it by, let me make the motion and then talk about it. I move that the board allow the full design and build out of the administrative area of the DPW facility, but not make a further determination of staff location at this time. So.
We got a second. You've heard the motion. Is there a second? Moved in second, and Selectmen George?
Okay, so at our previous meeting two times ago, I discussed it and talked about it being the chairman of the DPW Building Committee. In hindsight, I sort of jumped the gun and said we wouldn't, we would just do the rough thing of it. But we really need to for design and development and all of it, we need to have the plans in place and, and like we're going to move people up there, but not move people up there yet in our, in our process. So we really need to change the motion to include it being built out, design, development, build out. And when the time is appropriate, probably within a year after we move into the facility, people will be moved up there. But we want to capture as much as we can in that amount of money that we have to spend. If it comes to a point where we have to cut back on some things, that certainly will be the area that probably we will look at. But I sort of jumped the gun in saying that we just do a rough build, you know, rough frame out. So I'd like to change the motion to the one I just presented.
Can I ask a question?
Please.
Thank you. So on the motion, I was reading along with the motion as you were talking. What is not addressed in the motion? I got a little confused the way it was there. So what do you want added to it? Just the addition part?
Just the part that I read that I added to it. Before, it was just that we were, we weren't going to build it out at all. The previous motion that we had two, two meetings ago. So this is a new motion talking about full design and build out of the administrative area, but not putting person, not deciding on where the personnel will be at this point.
Isn't that what the motion says, though?
Yes. Tonight's motion is correct.
Right, okay. I thought you, I thought you were looking to amend this.
I did, too. I did, too. Yeah. So tonight, so the motion you read is correct. Yes. Okay.
Okay.
Wasn't there some discussion last previous meeting about not having the administrative team up at the DPW barn so that people could access Town Hall, people that didn't drive, elderly people?
Right.
We talked about that.
Right. And that will, that's the part that it says, and this motion says, and not make a further determination on staff location at this time.
Okay, so we could leave them at Town Hall?
Yes, could leave some of them there, absolutely.
And that's what's to get out to bid.
Yeah, okay, all right. In this decision, where to put Joe Parisi and then the administrative staff will, will lie with the Board of Selectmen, correct?
Yes.
Yes, it does.
All right. Very good. All right, you're, any other discussion on this matter? Hearing none, let's move to a roll call vote. Selectmen Donley? Selectmen George?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0. End of year transfers, if there are any other.
There are no year-end transfers for this meeting, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Okay, Dr. Cohen, you're up.
Thank you. The first item on the Board of Health agenda is the approval of the minutes of 5:26. Do I hear a motion to approve?
I move.
Do I hear a second?
A second.
I think I heard Ron second.
Yep.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. So those minutes are approved. We've lost Sadie, but the second point of business is a wonderful opportunity to find an incredible replacement. Barb McCarthy is interested in joining the Board of Health, and we would love to have her. She's been an invaluable colleague, not only in this COVID period, but certainly before. She's been a liaison with Beverly and Gloucester and all of Cape Ann. Her experience and wisdom has been fantastic. Do I hear a motion to appoint Barbara McCarthy to the, as a new member to the Board of Health?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
My second.
Any discussion?
I just want to, you know, add my voice to what you said, Bruce. I've known Barbara for many years and been very impressed and had very, you know, great interactions and experience with her. And I think, as you noted, she stepped up, you know, as an advisor during this period and has been so valuable. And I'm sure she'll continue to, you know, impress us in that way going forward. So I'm very much supportive.
I would like to also say that she's been great. I've known Barb all my working career at Addison Gilbert Beverly and Northeast Health Systems in Lakeview. And she is an excellent, excellent person to have on the board with all of her knowledge, especially working in infectious diseases all of her years, risk management. She's an excellent candidate for the Board, Board of Health.
Great. So roll call vote to approve Barbara McCarthy as the fifth member of the board. Ron?
Aye.
Mary Beth?
Aye.
And aye as well. Passes 3-0.
Does she have to be here to, um, she definitely wants to do it, right?
Yeah, she did submit her letter, and she will be up for an interview with the Selectmen next Tuesday. She says she will be present for that meeting.
Okay, we don't want to be like falling.
Surprise. That's great. The next item on the agenda is COVID-19 testing. Usually we hear a report from Barb from Beverly. She's not with us this evening. Is there anyone else who can update on testing?
I don't have anything to report yet. I haven't spoken to her this week.
Okay. In my data presentation, I'll present some of the latest figures for testing and percent positive that we've gotten from the state health department, but no news about more local testing quite yet. Great. Any other comments from Board of Health members? Hearing none, I turn it back over to you, Paul.
Thank you, Dr. Cohen, and we'll move right along to letter E, considerations of current or additional restrictions relating to COVID-19. Why don't we start with Mitch, and then we can move along to other people, if you can give us an update.
Sure. So at this, this point, the, the boards each week have been discussing basically what's left for restrictions for consideration on whether you feel that they should remain in place or whether you wish to lift them. So currently, the items in place are T-WARF is restricted to resident-only parking, beaches restricted to resident-only, all play structures in the parks are closed, parks are restricted to resident-only, and basketball courts are closed.
Okay. Let's go, why don't we go one by one and discuss, discuss the merits of, of the closure and what we think of it, and hear from obviously the Board of Health and other Selectmen. So the first one was, which one?
T-WARF.
T-WARF. Resident parking.
Okay, what are people's thoughts about opening it up?
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I ask one question before we start this? Thank you. Are all of the items we're going to discuss now within our purview, are, do any of them have any state oversight included with them? So anything we're going to talk about, we have the power to open, close, restrict, whatever?
You do.
Yes.
Okay.
The Board of Health, there's full authority between the two on all of these remaining items. In addition, there's the mask order and the transfer station mask order, but yes, between the two boards, everything is within the purview.
Thank you.
Thank you. Continue, Chair.
That's okay. No, that's an excellent point. So T-WARF, right now it's residence-only. Is there any appetite to put that back to pre-COVID-19 restrictions? Or do we want to keep it the same way?
I think I would actually like to hear from the chief if he can report. I think he's someone that's most knowing what's happening down there in the weekends. So I'd like to hear from him on this one, if he feels the officers down there feel like it's reasonable to have more people down there or not.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. So it is busy, but it's still early in the season, as we all know. As long as the weather's good on the weekends, we're getting what's expected to be a significant amount of foot traffic downtown. By closing T-WARF, we're minimizing people that can park close to downtown, obviously, so we're, I obviously think they're finding parking somewhere else. It's just making it a little more difficult. The positive is a lot of folks are, are adhering to the face covering and face mask mandate that we have. They either have them with them, and if an officer sees them, they, they approach them or they indicate to put the mask on, they do. If they don't have one, our officers over the last couple of weekends have given about 25 masks on Saturday and 25 masks on Sunday to folks that didn't have them, but compliance has been, been better than what I expected. As far as the parking goes, you know, if we're opening businesses and the expectation is we're asking people to come to town to frequent the businesses, then I think it's prudent to open the parking to allow folks to frequent the businesses, if that's, if that's what our goal is. There's probably about, you know, probably about 15 parking spaces on the visitor side of T-WARF. The resident side is the resident side. So we're looking at about 15 parking spaces. It's not going to make or break us at this point, as long as what we see or compliance with the face covering and face masks continues.
Excellent. Anyone from the Board of Health?
Yes.
Before I go to Selectmen? Okay, let's go to Selectmen then. Hearing none. Selectmen Donley?
Yeah, just a question for Sarah and the reopening committee. I'm wondering if there's a plan to eliminate some parking spaces in town to allow for dining outside of restaurants? And if so, would it make sense to make the T-WARF available? Um, you mean make it, do you mean make it available for non-residents? Yeah. Okay. Yeah, a little bit later in the meeting, I'm going to submit kind of a loose, a casual plan for kind of a loose approval for these two boards. So, yes, but, but part of the plan definitely involves at least a handful of parking spaces. Yeah, so it might make sense to make T-WARF available for that reason. Yeah, Paula, I think it might make sense just as we look at these, just so that we know which board, on which regulation, which boards vote on them. I obviously get input from both, but just to kind of speed things along, it might help so that we know.
Right, now, this, this, this vote would be with the Board of Selectmen. I just wanted to get a, an opinion from the Board of Health regarding.
Of course. Of course. And I think we want their opinion on all of them, so.
Yes. Selectmen Campbell, did you have your hand up?
Yeah, real quick, for the chief, actually, have you seen with the closing of T-WARF and, you know, a little more restricted parking, has there been any problems with any of the residents in the surrounding neighborhoods and streets with overflow parking? Because, you know, I've been driving through and I'm seeing a lot of people, a lot of cars. Has there been anything out of the ordinary? I know it's still early in the season.
The overflow parking complaints that we receive were morally, more associated with Hell of a Point and not necessarily the downtown area.
Good. Thank you.
Selectmen George?
Yeah, I agree with the chief. I think if we're going to be welcoming people to, you know, coming to the area starting now, I think we need to have more parking available, especially if we're going to be maybe taking up some of the spots on Main Street or wherever for, for dine-out park, for people to dine in the, outside the buildings and stuff. I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Anyone else? Dr. Newman?
Yeah, I think the sole purpose for closing those spots to outsiders was to keep people from coming to town. And if we're no longer interested in doing that, then I think it doesn't make sense to keep them closed to outsiders, so.
Okay.
A question. The trolley no long, is not running, correct?
But there hasn't been a final determination on it.
Okay. That's not later.
Would you like a motion, Paul?
Yes, please.
So I move that the town remove the parking restrictions from T-WARF.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Seconded.
Moved in second, and roll call, any further discussion? Roll call, vote. Selectmen Donley?
Aye.
Selectmen George?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0 to open T-WARF to non-residents. Let's go to this, next one was non-residents on the beach. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is there, yes, Sarah?
Well, this one, I, from the reopening committee, several members of the reopening committee, you know, we do have an innkeeper on the, in the group. And I know that the Selectmen have received mail that now that the state has, the state beaches are open, and now that the state is allowing Airbnbs and, you know, hotels, motels, that it makes, you know, it obviously makes sense. I know that to open them up to non-residents, I know that some have reported that people who had already booked for the summer are like considering canceling if we don't lift the restriction. And I did notice yesterday that Gloucester, I believe, as of yesterday or today, are lifting, Good Harbor was resident-only, and now they're opening up a number of non-resident spaces. So I think our timing in terms of staying consistent with the state, I think, I think that our timing is, makes sense if we were to lift this.
So this is beaches and the beach parking lots. They're going together hand in hand, correct?
Well, our beach parking lots are our only resident, our only resident-only parking typically, right?
This would, this would, if you did have to open it, it would allow the sale of non-resident stickers.
Right, yes. Okay, that's what I was asking.
What's the current situation? What is it? I haven't been to the beaches recently. What are they like on a nice day? Are they dangerously crowded, or could they accommodate additional people, non-residents?
I don't think they're dangerously crowded. I think they're busy, but not dangerously crowded.
And when I've been, everyone has been distancing pretty much on a regular basis.
I was there over the, I'm sorry, go ahead, Doctor.
Um, so I agree, it would be wonderful to open up the beaches. I really think it needs to be accompanied by strong continuing educational messages around distancing. I, you know, when I pass the beaches, I don't see many people wearing face coverings, so distancing is really critical. So I, as we open the beaches, which I think is appropriate, I really would like us to see, to see us really emphasize good social distancing practices.
Makes sense.
I was there over the weekend, and I, I saw it, and I, Ruth can testify, I saw Ruth at the beach. It looked like that's what was going on. So I think it's, I think it's a good thing, and I think we do that. Do we have to, if we open the beaches, why do we have to include, and I will, before I say this, I want to commend the chief and his department because we were there and we did see quite a few tickets on cars down there for people who were trying to, trying to get in under this. So the tickets were given out, and I appreciate that. But do we have to start issuing non-resident stickers, or can we just open them to non-residents? And if they can walk on or what have you, they can do that. Do we have to have the two go together?
Good question.
You could do it either, either way, it's the board's prerogative.
I mean, I think if we're going to look for, as Dr. Cohen said, on that separation, as people go down there and want to take advantage of open beaches, I would be in favor, or I would be open at least, I'll put it that way, to not issuing non-resident stickers to the beach to try to alleviate some of the problems that may arise out of that. Because when you couple the two, the pandemic and then non-resident people coming to the beach, you kind of, it has the potential to exacerbate the problem.
So here's a question, Mitch, do you have any idea how many non-resident stickers we sell?
Don't know off the top of my head. I'm not.
I mean, that's something, Don, I mean, that's actually an interesting idea. That's something that if we were, that we could just wait, you know, we could wait a few weeks and see how, you know, I think actually Gloucester is not selling non-resident stickers this summer at all. So it couldn't hurt to wait, I mean, it's only June, it can't hurt, couldn't wait, hurt to wait a few weeks and see how we're doing.
But Gloucester also charges at Winger Shee, now at, at Good Harbor Beach, so non-residents are going to, going to those beaches, but they're not.
But they don't need a sticker, right?
They're not selling stickers.
Right, so non-residents can still come to our beaches, they just can park in the resident, like, near the resident parking, basically.
That's right.
Is there any public transportation? Does the trolley go down there if it's running?
We don't have the trolley.
The, there is a K-2 bus route that covers Thatcher Road in and out. Doesn't go down south at all, but it is on Thatcher Road.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I mean, we could, we could open the beaches to non-residents and then look at our next meeting, get some more data regarding opening it up to sticker sales to non-residents. Is people in agreement with that?
I agree.
I'd make the motion if you'd like.
Please, go ahead.
I move that we open all public beaches to non-residents and exclude the sale of non-resident stickers at this time.
Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Moved in second. Any further discussion?
Do we all vote on this, or just Selectmen?
I think it's just Selectmen, right?
This one would be Selectmen.
Okay.
Okay, roll call, vote. Selectmen Donley?
Aye.
Selectmen George?
Aye.
Selectmen Campbell?
Aye.
Selectmen Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectmen Murphy votes aye, and the motion passes 5-0 to open the beaches to non-residents in Rockport. What was, we had another one that we needed to discuss.
Oh, another, another one is the play structures. Actually, yeah, let's do the land, thank you, Selectmen George, good point. The parks are still restricted to residents only.
Okay. Is there any appetite to, at this point, since we're opening up all these areas, which is wonderful, is there any appetite to open the parks at this point?
So please remind me which parks this would cover?
This covers Barletta, Harvey, Pingree, Millbrook. I'm trying to think quickly in my head. Chief, any others? Evans Field, top of Summit Ave.
Yeah. Does it include the school?
No, it does not include school.
Would you like a motion, and then we can discuss?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. Chair, I move that, is it so, that we, I move that the town open the parks included to non-residents.
I'll second that.
Excluding the school department.
So that's not considered.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's not, because the school committee would be in charge of that. Okay, you've heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second, and let's have further discussion. Any, any comments from the board?
Yeah, I think it's appropriate. I think the time has come. We don't have huge groups down in the parks. Pretty much people are scattered. We're having people come into town, bed and breakfast, motels are open. People want to walk their animals, stroll through places. I think the time is now. I mean, we certainly want to encourage again, people to social distance and wear their masks, but I think it's appropriate to slowly open these things.
Would this allow picnicking in the parks? Full use, full range of activities?
I would think if they were a family unit, they could do it if they have been socially together all along, but I wouldn't think that you would have, we wouldn't let big groups go to that.
Um, is this something where, where there's playground equipment? I do think we should put out there the disclaimer. I do think we should put out there the disclaimer that none of the equipment is sterile, is going to be sanitized and it's all, or is that a separate?
That's a separate motion.
That's a separate one, okay.
Question, Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Denise Donling.
Do we know whether the state has opened the parking at Halibut Point?
They have.
Yeah, so I think to be consistent, we probably want to open our parks.
Yeah, okay, good.
Which is, there's still a mandate that there's, there's no contact sports allowed in any parks?
That's, that's still in place.
Yeah. Yeah, and you know, I think I agree with Dr. Cohen that as we open things, you know, kind of like as we take a step to open, we just take an extra step on education. You know, just get more and more out there that, you know, have your mask on you, be ready to social, you know, social distance and wear your mask when you can.
Okay, Mr. Lebo has his hand up. Can we unmute him?
Okay, so Rob, you just need to unmute. There we go.
The school committee has one more school committee meeting on the 17th of June. We could get a agenda item on, our custodial staff does not return until July 6th from furlough. But I think we could entertain a, if the Board of Health supports that, of opening up the playground and fields as well once the maintenance staff comes back as of just post-July 4th when they return. So that there's trash being able to be cleaned up and all that with the same disclaimers that are up at the other public facilities. I'd look to Chief Horvath a little bit on that, whether, you know, how he felt about that as well. But we do have one more school committee meeting where that action could be taken. But we would, I think, want the Board of Health to at least open the, open the possibility first on that. So Don, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we would.
Oh, that's fine. I'm used to it for the most part. I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that, Rob. I think, and I think it's also part of the state guidelines, if I remember correctly. So anybody participating should, should be wearing face masks if they're on the playgrounds, age dependent, obviously. Social distancing is still in order, even though it's a playground. I mean, that's really upon the parents and guardians to make sure that that happens. My only question for our side, I guess, would be, you know, as far as cleaning of the surfaces on the playscape. I mean, obviously it can't be done every day, but on some type of periodic basis, if we can somehow build that in, that would be great.
Yeah, I think that'll be difficult because the custodial staff would be able to probably empty trash and that sort of thing. But they're going to be involved in all the kind of things that have to occur, changes in the building in term of, terms of shields and, you know, deep cleaning of surfaces inside. I don't think that would be possible, but once you get into July, it's almost impossible to keep, you know, people out of that area now. Tennis courts and, and all that spot, but I don't think we could do cleaning, but. I mean, maybe then it has to, has to remain shut, but it's, there's no one there to police that. Our offices aren't open, custodians would not be doing that, they'll be inside, there's one outside maintenance person and that's it. But, I mean, with everything else opening, it's sort of, it's a little.
Could we get, get the Department of Public Works?
No, they can't.
So they're, they're already backlog done, workload right now, yep.
Then I think we, I think we might have to keep that closed and because it doesn't sound like.
I think a lot of, a lot of cities and towns are just saying, you know, things are open, but be aware that things are not being sanitized publicly. So, you know, it's up to, it's up to parents whether they, you know, make the decision to use them and then sanitize right after or don't use them.
Put a disclaimer, put a disclaimer out there.
Yeah, just say, you know, just so you know.
If Rob is talking about not having school facilities open until July, we might be entering phase three for the state and there might be more guidance around playgrounds and equipment. So I, I guess for the school, certainly for the school property, I'd like to just postpone that until we know it won't open until July, until we get more state guidance.
I would be in favor, if we're talking about playground equipment, those are really high-touch areas that you really can't keep clean.
No, they can't.
Yeah, I, I, I don't feel comfortable with that at this point myself. So that's my opinion.
All right.
So they, so the playground structures at Millbrook Park and Pigeon Cove should stay closed, even though we opened the park? Is that what you're proposing?
I, are you speaking to me? I mean, I, yeah, I mean, that's the way I feel. You know, the kids are going to be, you know, all over it, as is appropriate when you're playing on that kind of equipment. And then they're going to be going and running to their grandparents and their parents and.
Putting their hands in their mouths.
Yeah, it's, it still seems premature to me. The other things sound perfectly fine, there's not much contact, there's not high frequency, high touch surfaces involved. And I think if we're doing the stepwise, it would seem to me that's one more step out there, so.
Okay.
I agree with Ron. Play structures, if we're not going to be able to keep them constantly clean, then I think it's premature to open them up in the parks.
So are we in agreement that we're going to open up the public parks excluding the parks that have play structures?
Well, the parks, but as long as we keep the play structures closed and people maintain social distancing and preferably face coverings, I would be fine with that.
Okay.
I'll, I'll make that motion or do we already make it?
Well, we, yes, why don't you go ahead?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we open all of the parks in Rockport, but we keep the play structures closed for the time being.
And a disclaimer that parents, people need to understand that things aren't as clean as they should be.
Right, that's why we're not opening the place.
Open it up, yeah, okay. All right, is there a second?
Well, a question real quick. How, how do we actually enforce that?
Oh, we have, this is a great way, as the chief and sure can tell you, but there are signs out and we'll put, like we've done, we'll put caution tape on them. Chief, if you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, and obviously we would react to any type of citizen complaint or concern that came in that we've got kids on the playscape. You know, we'll go there with kid gloves, if you will, and just remind folks that, you know, that the playscape is closed for very good reasons and just ask them to, you know, to leave the area. So, yeah, it's, it's not fun kicking kids off a slide or a swing, but at this point, you know, it's for the right reason. So we, we would put up the caution tape, as Mitch said, we've got signs out already, and then if we get a complaint, we'll obviously respond.
Okay. Is, we, I did not get a second on that last motion.
Second.
Moved in second, any further discussion? All those in favor, roll call, vote. Selectman Donling?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes five zero. Great, thank you.
Place, so play structures, we're on hold on that one. There is one other, my apologies, there is one other. The requirement to leash all dogs in all areas of town is still in effect. That's another restriction with the exception of the woods.
Yeah, I think if we're going to be opening things and is there any argument against it? From any, any of the board members?
No.
No.
Okay, all right, how about a motion to unleash dogs?
I'll make a motion that we.
Selectman George?
I'll make a motion that all dogs maybe don't need to be leashed in, in.
Okay, maybe the motion should revert to our regular.
Yeah, okay, okay, I'll make a motion that we revert to our previous leash law in town.
Prior to the pandemic, perfect. Okay, you've heard the motion. Okay, moved in second and any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote. Selectman Donling?
Aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Hold on one second.
Got it?
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes five zero to go back to the old leash law prior to the pandemic, pandemic. Do we have any updates? Oh, anything else regarding COVID-19?
So there are the two, there are the mask orders that are in place for the Board of Health. The standing mask order, there's the downtown one, the portion of that requiring at all times in downtown. And there's the mask requirement at all times transfer station.
Okay.
Speaking to the Board of Health, I would like to keep those in place.
Okay.
And I agree.
Okay.
Chief Horvath has a comment on that, Dr. Cohen.
Well, I agree that mask, mask coverings and face masks are important and certainly it's going to go far in spreading the COVID-19 disease, but my concern is where we have it downtown around Front Beach, people are not wearing masks on the beach. I think if anybody's been by Front Beach, we're not seeing folks wearing masks. I'm hoping to have a lifeguard there in the next couple of weeks, at least a couple of days out of the week. So I think if we're going to have something, it should be something that is going to be followed and can be enforced. I think at some point, being on the beach wearing a mask or expecting someone to wear a mask all day when it's extremely hot and you're laying out on the beach is unreasonable. I think if you can't socially distance on the beach, then you should put a mask on. But I think for that beach, specifically just that beach, because it's mandatory as part of downtown, I think we should make an exception for the beach area itself. Because my concern is, number one, people aren't following it. I put a lifeguard out there, the lifeguard can't be expected to enforce mask wear because they need to maintain their vigilance on water, on the water, because that's their primary concern. And it's going to be near impossible for, you know, a police officer in the summertime to enforce a mandatory mask wear on a beach. It's just not, it's just not reasonable to expect that. So I just put that out there for consideration. The rest of downtown is fine, it's just on the, on the, on the beach proper itself. I would ask that we, we lift that mandatory and make it. If you can't socially distance, you need to wear a face covering or mask.
Okay, thank you, John.
I'm actually also additionally, like now that restaurants are going to be opening up downtown. I mean, I think requiring face masks at the dump is a no-brainer. It's kind of a dirty, dirty place. But it's just, again, it's sort of a mixed message downtown, the mandatory face masks. Yeah, I've sort of always felt this way, but I think that if restaurants are going to start opening for outdoor seating, having the face mask requirement downtown, even on bare skin neck is, is, it's getting to, it's too restrictive right now. If, if it, if they were needed, then we shouldn't be opening the restaurants either.
State policy is clear, you know, you wear the mask when you go in a restaurant and when you sit down at the table, you can take the mask off in order to eat. That's, that's the clear state guidelines and I think that'll be consistent with the restaurants in Rockport. I don't see any reason to step back on the face masks downtown, bare skin neck and in the commercial areas. I think they do an enormous amount of good because social distancing is difficult and will be getting more difficult as more people come and as more parking areas are taken up for outdoor seating. So I would strongly encourage the continuation of face masks. Except I, I think the chief raises a really important point around Front Beach. I had a question whether it would be possible to limit occupancy on Front Beach in order to guarantee that there would be social distancing if we do eliminate the mask or face covering requirement.
I, I don't see how that's possible. Who's going to police that? Certainly not the police, certainly not the poor lifeguard who's trying to watch people and save lives in the water. I think that's, I agree with Chief Horvath that I think the beaches need to be excluded in the mask. If the people can't socially distance, they need to wear a mask, but otherwise you're not going to wear a mask at the beach.
So if you can't socially distance at Front Beach, would you, are you be required to wear a mask?
We would say that, yes.
Well, I, I think that if our, if we were to rescind our mask order for the beach, then it would revert to the state, right? So then I think we're covered in terms of if you can't socially distance and you're required to.
Yeah, it would revert back, yep. Good point, Sarah.
Yeah, we can go more strict than the state, but we can't go less strict.
Right.
So I, I think the chief's point is well-taken for Front Beach. So I would be in favor of excluding Front Beach from the mandatory face mask covering in the downtown district.
Okay.
Also in the downtown area, question? Is Back Beach also in the downtown area?
No, no. Okay, any further discussion on this matter? Okay, I need a motion, please.
So I guess this is a Board of Health motion.
Correct.
So I, I move that Back Beach be excluded from the mandatory face covering policy covering the downtown district.
You mean Front Beach?
I'm sorry, Front Beach.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Moved in second and roll call, vote. Dr. Cohen?
Yes.
Dr. Newman?
Yes.
Mrs. Murphy?
Yes.
And the motion passes three zero. Thank you. Okay.
Mitch, what about basketball courts? We didn't talk about that.
So those are also still closed. That's concerned export.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's still closed. Okay, good, yep.
Okay. Anything else on that matter? Hearing none, let's move on to letter F, long-term care and living facilities update?
I'll do an update. I spoke with Pigeon Cove Ledges and Rockwood High School Apartments, Dawn Rose there, and they're doing well. And I spoke to Millbrook Park Lee Duda, the executive director there, and they're also doing well. They don't have any COVID-19 patients. They haven't had anyone test positive. The, I would say the natives are getting a little restless. They're anxious to have visitors. They are both, all three of those, three of those places are all still restricting visitors to patient care people who are coming in to assist the residents. They don't like family, they don't let friends come to visit yet. And that's pretty much what they're, the state is telling them. But the, the people are getting anxious to have more, more visitors and things. But again, they're out in the public, they're going to restaurants and out in town and stuff. So they do have some outside activities. So they've just, each group is trying to cautiously tell them it will be, it will be time soon. And Old Farm Inn is a status quo.
I missed, Mr. Chairman, I missed most of last week's meeting. Did we talk about the meeting that several of us had with the staff at Denmark and the DPH? Is that discussed?
We did, but very, very briefly. So if you want to share your thoughts about that meeting?
Yeah, okay, I don't want to be redundant, but just briefly, you know, we were obviously very concerned with the reports we were getting through Chastity and Teresa with the amount of illness and, and death, actually, there was at Denmark. And so a week ago today, Chastity, Mitch and I met with several representatives of DPH and with the administrator, the chief of nursing, an infection control person and a representative of the parent company for Denmark to go over the situation there. They, we were told they've had 37 plus positives in residents there. 24 staff were positive and there've been 13, at least 13 deaths there. But I don't know if people saw the globe about a week ago. They're not alone. There are, there are 80 long-term care facilities in Massachusetts. Uh, they're not alone. There were, there are eighty long-term care facilities in Massachusetts with at least twenty COVID nineteen deaths. So that's about twenty percent of facilities. And about sixty-two percent of COVID deaths in Massachusetts, it's over four thousand, are in long-term care facilities. But just the same, uh, you know, we thought it was important, we. You know, we heard about the challenges that they had early on, including, um, you know, the severity of illness and the number of sick patients that kind of came all at once. Staffing difficulties, PPE difficulties, difficulty isolating the COVID patients. Uh, not enough testing initially. And, uh, we were also concerned about what kind of medical coverage there was for the facility. So, uh, the, the, uh, DPH has been very involved there. They have. Uh, strengthened their staffing. They have a rapid response team that's been there. It includes nurses and nursing assistants to actually. Augment the care given by the, you know, the staff, um, the regular staff. Um, they've provided administrative support to the administrators there. And, um, there have been daily phone calls between DPH and the staff at Denmark. With an eye toward in particular, making sure that staffing is okay and that PPE is adequate. And my understanding is that staffing is still somewhat of an issue, but they're doing better and working on that. They're also preparing for any resurgence. You know, there's a concern that there may be another surge in number of cases, perhaps in the fall with the flu season. And we spoke some about that and their stockpiling, stockpiling supplies. And coordinating with their parent company to make sure that they're prepared should something like that happen again. So, um. It sounds as if things are under better control. They've learned a fair bit from what they've already been through. And, um, and I will maintain contact with the medical directors periodically to see from their perspective, how, how they think things are doing. And, uh, and Chassis has been very, uh, involved in, uh, on a regular basis. I don't know, Chassis, um, what's your sense? I mean, it's only a week later. How are things doing?
Yeah, things are, um, generally stable, um, much more stable than they had been. They did have two additional, um, confirmed cases. Uh, but no new deaths to report, no new staff cases. Um, they are consistently sending line lists, um, keeping me up to date on every resident. Um, which I really appreciate, really helps kind of paint the picture of what's going on there. That's something they struggled with. During, um, the surge of cases, which I understood, but it made it difficult to get information. So they're very communicative. Um, sharing those regularly. Um, so I'm very happy with where things are currently.
Great, thank you. And Mitch, any comments?
No, I'm, I'm in agreement with you folks. I certainly, um, defer to, uh, you, Chassis, the clinical end of things. So if you're, if you're good, I'm good, I think is, uh, how I put that one.
Yep.
Chassis, have they been, um, continually testing the residents and are they like, keeping them isolated until they test negative? Um, is that sort of process still happening? Are patients starting to test negative now?
Yeah, yes, people have tested negative, um, and they had kind of a small group of, of residents that had been negative all this time. Um, and so those two positives, um, had, had elevated temperatures, so they tested them. Um, and they came back positive. Um, but I recommended that they continue to test. Um, that group of negatives just in case, so they have enough test kits to do that. So we may see more positives. But they, they've moved the people who've tested positive, you know, out of the, the rooms that they were in. So they're doing all the things they're supposed to do.
Thank you.
Great.
Okay, anything else? On that topic? Hearing none, let's move on. Uh, the reopening advisory, uh, committee update. Selectman Wilkinson, it's all yours.
Um, thank you. So the reopening group has been really busy, hard at work. Um, I'll try to get through this quickly. So we have kind of released several documents. We have released the state document that's on mask use. That can be kind of printed and used as a poster in businesses. We have, um, created, Barb and Chassis, a document. On frequently asked questions that employers might be asked by their employees or customers. Um, about kind of COVID positive cases in a, in a business. Um, and then we've created two documents that have, have been distributed to business owners and are available on the town website. Um, the first of those is a general kind of town local guideline for reopening. It kind of outlines all the steps that businesses have to take with links to the state requirements for each industry. And then the second document is, uh, the same document, but geared towards retail stores. We released that one on Monday. Um, both of those have the requirement, include the requirement that the Board of Health voted on last week, I believe. Which was that the state plan that all businesses need to complete to re- to reopen. Also just needs to be submitted to our Board of Health Office. And Mitch has, Mitch can answer this, but Mitch has reported to me that several, I, I know we've received, do you have any idea how many plans or checklists?
Sure, yeah, I, I did a quick check through the, um, COVID email. We've received, um, a couple dozen at least.
Great, great. So, um, and you'll notice if you've, if you go to any, um, store or other business. Um, part of it is the self attestation. It's kind of a little checklist with a signature. A lot of businesses. Have them in their front window and they're supposed to be displayed for anyone who goes there. And seeing one of those is a, is a good sign. It means that people are aware of all of the policies. It usually means that they've submitted their plan to the town. And it also just means that they're generally aware of all of the state guidelines that they need to follow. So, um, good news on that front. We, um, and then kind of secondly, we have two. Items that we are looking for a kind of a blessing from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health on. The first, uh, deals with outdoor displays. At this time, we feel that we're looking to kind of safely, as we've all discussed. Get people, um, into the downtown businesses. So, um, to do that, we're trying to keep kind of areas open. I know we're trying to keep bare skin neck open without a lot of stuff. Meaning merchandise. So at this point, I know the Board of Selectmen isn't giving out outdoor display permits. But the reopening group has decided that it would be really helpful. Several of the businesses already have. A sandwich board kind of out front. We also thought it might be helpful for people to be able to have the option of an easel. But that sandwich board or easel should have information regarding going into that business. For example, um, you know, how many customers are allowed in their store? You know, just saying masks allowed, um, you know, please knock and I'll, you know, the, the shop owner will come to the, any, any kind of directions related. It's not to be used as a marketing, you know, fifty percent off, seventy-five percent off. That will be our next, the next thing we'll look at is how to kind of. You know, add something to support the businesses themselves, but the first was just kind of getting people safely into the businesses. So we are looking for a motion. Um, I guess it, is it just Board of Selectmen, Mitch?
But, uh, it would, it would be both looking at, um, well, I should, which issue do you want to do first, Sarah?
Just the sandwich board.
So the sandwich board would be the selectmen only?
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion, um, for each business to allow for a sandwich board or easel if necessary. That contains COVID-related information entering businesses.
Okay, you, you want to, uh, tackle this now or at the end?
No, that'd be great if we could just do it now. I'll also ask if anyone on the reopening group, the chief, I don't, Barb's not here. If the chief wants to add anything to this.
I'd make that motion.
I have, I have one thing to add if we can. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, do we need to be location specific? I know that sounds strange, but, um, I know a lot of businesses, would, should it be confined to their area or does, can they? I, I just don't want to see signs for some businesses in, in off-site locations, that's all.
Sure, so that's a good point. So you could add, um, what, adjacent to your business?
Adjacent to the entrance to the business.
Adjacent to the entrance to the business would be great. Excellent.
And, and this would be for any, any place in town?
Yep, any business in town.
Any business in Rockport, okay. All right, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Selectman George, go ahead.
I'll, I'll make the motion that we allow, um, sandwich boards or easels, uh, adjacent to businesses. To denote their, um, COVID nineteen guidelines and restrictions for entering into their business.
Okay, you heard the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
I'll, I have one more question, if I can.
Any further discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, there you go. Do we have to put a timeframe on this?
No, I think, I think it's certainly in place until you, you determine otherwise as a board. And I think from what we're seeing, we're anticipating this will probably be something that'll be all of the season at least.
Okay, can we, Mitch, can you just add a tickler in there for say, you know, September, October, so we can revisit this? Because if this lingers out there, then I just want to make sure we tie up loose ends at the end of this whole insanity.
Great. Okay, it's been moved in second. Any other comments we've got before we vote? Hearing none, let's move on. All those in favor, uh, Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Donley?
Aye.
Selectman Campbell?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye and the motion passes five zero. Excellent. Anything else, Sarah?
Yeah, second thing. So sorry to be, sorry to take so long. Um, second item is an item that we need the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health on. So we have started to tackle the, um, issue of out, outdoor dining. So, um, we are, I know we've mentioned this, there's still a little bit of confusion. So the first item we're tackling is. There are several restaurants in town that don't have any, there are several restaurants in town that have some out, outdoor dining area. I know that at least a couple, I believe, opened yesterday and are, are doing outdoor dining. So there are a handful of restaurants that, um, have been doing takeout, but have no outdoor dining space. So like, like, you know, hundreds of other cities and towns in the country, we are trying to, um. Kind of even the playing field a little bit. And the goal is, our first goal, kind, this is going to be, you know, could be a multi-step process, but the first goal is. To try and get everyone some area, some outdoor area. And now, when I say everyone, I'm talking about restaurants that have wait service. So, we have a list and we have, um, set six different areas that our group is going to be, we, we've started discussing with the police chief. Um, this week, we are doing a site, kind of a very detailed site visit. And then if we get the blessing from these two boards tonight, our plan will be very soon, like in the next two days. To, um, put to the pub, put out to the restaurants a very, very simple application process. And then to come back to these two boards next week with the plans and, um, kind of the applications. And the applications would do two things. They would have, uh, they would, um, have diagrams of the space and kind of their plan for tables. They would have to fall obviously within all the state guidelines and all the social distancing, all of that. And then the plans would also count as an application, if the restaurant chooses, to extend their licensed alcohol service area. So, um, typically when a restaurant applies to the Board of Selectmen with their alcohol, for their alcohol license, they have to show a drawing with a. The licensed area kind of all drawn out. So this would be, um, an additional diagram with that licensed, with the extension of the licensed area drawn out. And the state, um, has done us a nice thing in that they have extended a great deal of flexibility to local municipalities. And that we are allowed to do this. They don't have to submit things to the ABCC in addition, I don't believe. Mitch, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But, um, so if we get kind of the, uh, casual blessing from the Board of Selectmen and Board of Health. We are going to be, um, kind of looking at six different areas. And with these areas, the, the goal is. For these six restaurants to, to, if they're interested, they would then apply to us. For use of this outdoor area. And the outdoor areas would be, um, are adjacent to the restaurants. And, um. They would be fully serviced by the restaurant. So the town would provide the barriers. To make the area safe and then beyond that, restaurant provides the tables and everything else. So the six areas are, um, I'll kind of start by Mount Pleasant Street. The area in front of Hula Moon, um, the area in front of the Red Skiff. And then in each of these areas, we're going to look at the parking spaces in front and the sidewalk. And in some, we may, we may consider rooting the walking traffic. Through the parking spaces and use the sidewalk, kind of whatever the chief deems safest. Um, area three would be in between Dock Square and the Blue Locker. So there we would potentially reroute traffic around Dock Square to take it right up the neck. Um, some area in front of the Fish Shack, the, and then, um, a bigger look in front of the, in front of Seder and Wedge, going up to Brothers Brew. And then, um, area six would be by Nate at Front Beach. Sorry to add, to give like an incredible amount of information there, but, um, we're looking for kind of a general blessing this evening to move ahead. And I'm happy to answer any questions. And Mitch and Chief, uh, like, let me know if, if I missed anything.
Do you need a formal vote?
So I, I don't. I don't think this necessarily needs to be a vote. I, I think that if the boards give conceptual approval through consensus.
Yeah.
Um, that would allow the reopening committee to look patients closer, work with, uh, people who made the established. And applying and, and then for next week. We'd bring it back and it would require formal votes from Health and Selectmen at that point after.
Nope, that doesn't make sense.
Sign off from the police chief and, um, John Kulan, the health inspector.
So I, I have a question, Sarah, or to the chief. Obviously, the, some of these restaurants have liquor licenses. Uh, we are going to allow, uh, liquor to be served outside. Within that contained area?
Yeah, with specific restrictions as to.
Okay.
The proximity of the restricted area to the business. We discussed it earlier. We want people crossing streets in order to serve alcohol, as an example.
Right, or, or that would be open container law violation, so, as well. Okay, I just wanted to, uh, double check that. All right, uh, so is there any questions, uh, Selectman George?
No, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think it's a beginning of opening up the restaurants. I think it's helping them get some business. And it might be something that some of these restaurants are wanna, gonna wanna look at in the future and. Look at an area that they might have adjacent to them to do some outside dining. I mean, it's a perfect time to, to trial this in town and look at it and. I think it will be, I think it will work out well. I think as long as that the group with Sarah and everyone that's working has it all planned out and we have restrictions. And, you know, it'll, it'll go slow. I don't think everyone will take advantage of it right away, but I think it's a, a great start.
Yeah, just, just to add in the, um, the other thing is that if there's a restaurant. That has, um, more private land, that already has a license that has like other, more private land available to them. We would also consider an application from them as well to expand their licensed area. But these are, um, these would be specifically on, you know, on public areas. That's why we're kind of going through such an extensive process. And obviously, um, you know, following mask, Massachusetts guidelines, like looking at utmost safety. You know, to do it quickly because we know that places need to get open. People have been out of work for a long time. And we're trying to do, you know, the best we can for the most, most number of, of businesses down there.
Oh, that's great.
Sarah, there's no place on the neck that would, um, need, uh, this as well?
So the, the restaurants on the neck, um. The majority of, I believe it's three out of the four that have wait service have actually outdoor dining areas already. Um, one of them, one of them has some other issues, but they may have some private land available to them. So we're. We haven't dealt with that one yet, but, um, at this point, the majority on the neck already have outdoor seating.
So, um, a couple of quick comments. Uh, in my, um, state health department called today. Um, they discussed briefly, uh, alcohol outside of restaurants. And one thing that was clear, there needs to be a fence or clear perimeter. That separates the dining and alcohol serving area from the rest of the public. That's one of the requirements, um, that they were very clear about. I just also wanted to see, John, if John Kulan is on the call, if you have any input or feedback at this time?
I am on the call. And, uh, this has been a frequent, uh, topic of conversation as I've been. Uh, in the, uh, businesses that, in, uh, uh, Dock Square and, and Neck and elsewhere in town. And, uh, it, it, it will come as, as a, uh, I hope, a relief to, uh, quite a few of the folks who have brought it up to me. As to, uh, whether or not they'd be able to establish any, uh, outdoor seating on the. as to whether or not they'd be able to establish any outdoor seating on the sidewalk or anyplace else in the public way. And I've been able to tell them that I knew that it is under discussion. So hopefully, a number of those folks are on this call and can see that it is in fact, not only under discussion, but being considered with the input of the town officials, such as the police chief, who are given jurisdiction over the public safety. And I've said that more than anything else, it's the issue of public safety that has to be considered. So again, I'm glad to see that it's being taken up in this public forum. And I think that those folks who have brought it up already should be able to take some solace in that the town officials really have heard what their concerns are and are looking to see if their needs can be met in a safe and healthy way.
And just to add, just to also answer Dr. Cohen's point. So the town would be providing, you know, Jersey barriers, kind of, you know, to change the traffic flow, the general barriers. And then if beyond that, there are more specific barriers needed for the licensed area, then, you know, we would work with the restaurant, but the restaurant would most likely have to be, you know, provide like roping or that type of thing. And that would be in each of their applications as well.
Great, thanks.
Little question?
Yes, sir.
Sarah, you had mentioned that private land was available, potentially not owned by the restaurant. Is that correct?
No, if a restaurant has private land available, we would entertain those applications as well.
But private land owned by the restaurant or adjacent to it that somebody would let them use? I guess I'm trying to clarify that. So it would need to be, they'd have to show a legal right to it. So in your alcohol regulations, you require showing proof of a legal right to use the property. So it would have to be their land or they'd have to have rental access of that land. And that's fine. My only concern is indemnification for the town and any problems that could arise from that, you know. So if they do, if they have a neighbor next door who says, sure, use my backyard or what have you, that the town is not held liable for anything. And I'm sure you've considered that.
We would have to see proof of that, right? And then Mitch, in addition, I believe that all the restaurants would have to sign a waiver to use the town land as well.
Correct. That would be, in addition, separate from the alcohol piece, but the general, we would require a waiver basically saying it's using your own risk. It'd be under their insurance to access that area.
Okay.
Just a question. You know, I'm supportive of this. It sounds like a great idea. How about animals, dogs? Are they allowed in outdoor dining in town or in the state? I just don't know.
That's a question for you.
I don't know.
Service dogs, I think.
Service dogs, yes.
I think probably just service dogs, right? Yeah. We'll have to look at our, we'll have to look at the state regs for that.
Yeah, I think it's up to local boards of health and communities whether to allow dogs and under what provisions. So I think we do need to examine that further. Because I know some communities do have outdoor seating with the capacity to have dogs who aren't service dogs in those areas.
We'll add that to the list next week.
Pardon me?
We'll add that to next week's list.
I don't know whether we can get it all done by next week, but I think at some point, we'll want to consider that if we're planning to have more outdoor seating at restaurants in general.
Great.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Sarah.
So are we, we just, so could we just get kind of a general consensus from both boards if?
Is there anyone opposed to any of this? Let's do it that way.
Okay.
Hearing none? Go forth, Sarah.
Great.
John, thank you.
Thank you.
It's gonna, I think it's gonna be really nice down there.
Can't wait. Fingers crossed.
Yes, exactly. Okay, let's move on to the town administrators' incident command updates. Anything, Mitch, that you need to share with us?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the chief said, just to re-stress, lifeguards will be starting in certain beaches this week. Orientation this week. But most importantly, it's a few months late, based on where we were with COVID. But our plan through this notification is to start the pay-for-parking season on 10:00 AM on Monday, June 15. So we have the kiosks in place. I'm actually, Mr. Chair, if it's all right, would you jump to screen share mode? And ask the chief if he can just quickly talk about the instructions for the new kiosk faces, which I'll give you one second. Okay, can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so the kiosk that you'll see on the street, the locations are the same. They haven't changed. The only thing that is slightly different is the actual faceplate of the kiosk, which you'll see on your screen there. It has a keypad on the right side there where the cursor is. That keypad is where you'll enter your plate. So it's a very easy intuitive process. There are directions on the kiosk itself that pretty much, they're just written in a little bit smaller writing. And complaints that I've heard from folks in the past is the writing's too small. I can't read it. With that being said, if you look at the screen that's lit up, it prompts you as to what needs to be done. So step one is you press the check button to get started. It'll then prompt you to enter your license plate. So you will need to know what your license plate number is on the vehicle that you're seeking to park on the street. You enter that plate number and you press that check button again to confirm. You then, it'll then prompt you to select your payment. So you'll either insert quarters or a credit card. It has to be Visa, MasterCard, or Discover. That's all that we take on these kiosks. And that remains consistent with what we had before. Once you do that, you enter the desired amount of time, which will be prompted on the screen as well. And you can enter up to four hours of time. Then you press the check button once again to confirm. Very important. And if you do nothing else, you're considered paid. Step six is you take your receipt. That receipt is just for you to take with you as your proof of payment. You do not have to put that receipt on the dashboard as you've had to do in years past. This is a pay-by-plate system and enforcement will be done electronically through a dashboard application on parking ticket riders that are parking control personnel will have, as well as our police officers. So the hope is that some of the issues we've dealt with in the past regarding tickets not coming out of the machines will no longer be an issue because you don't need that receipt to put on your dashboard anymore as proof of payment. Once you hit that check button to confirm, you will be paid in the system and we will be able to recognize that and won't have to rely on the receipt on the dashboard. That is, in a nutshell, what the new pay-by-plate parking kiosks are. The other value one is, once you walk up to the kiosk at this point and pay, you can walk away. You don't have to walk back to your vehicle to put that paper back on your dashboard as proof of payment. So any questions on this so far?
I have one, Chief. We can.
Go ahead.
You do not have to put the receipt on your dashboard. And it was hard to see by the screen share, but is that loud and clear on the machine itself? Because I think people will, are used to that in different parking places, putting that receipt on there. So does it enunciate that clearly that they do not have to do that?
It does not, the machine does not tell you that.
No, not tell you. I'm sorry. Enunciate was the wrong word. I'm sorry.
No, no, you're right. Yeah, and I understand what you mean to me. I wasn't clear. It does not, it does not state that you do not have to place the receipt on your dashboard.
What you were saying, I mean, were you intimidated?
If somebody does that, there's no penalty for that, obviously. We can add something if you think there's value in notifying people that they don't have to. It's on this set of instructions. We can certainly put something on the kiosk that states you don't have to put that receipt on your dashboard. If somebody does, that's fine. We're not going to be checking for it anyway because it holds no value in identifying payment for us. We have that in the system itself. And I'm just hoping that through, just through traversing the system, you know, and using the information that's in front of you, people understand that that receipt they can take with them. But if the board feels that they want to put something additional on the kiosk, we can certainly do that.
I would be of the mindset to add that on there to alleviate any confusion because I think people do that in other communities. And when they do it, you know, they're kind of used to doing it. And it's that feeling of apprehension, like, am I gonna get a ticket?
It was okay.
I'd rather just see them, you know, put their money in and walk away and go spend lots of money in Rockport with all our folks and feel good about it.
Sure.
So does it say what the app is on the kiosk?
The app is not ready to launch yet.
Oh, okay, got it. Okay.
So, and I can just speak really briefly to that. So the second phase of this, and we're hoping by the end of June, that'll be ready to go. And that's, it's using the same system, but it'll allow you to download an app to your phone and actually pay for your parking via your cell phone once you create an account. It's called McKay Pay. And you won't even have to go up to the kiosk at that point. You can just pay right from your phone. But we're just waiting on some of the technology to come in. And we have to get folks here trained on that. And then we'll be able to launch the app, which we can, I'll do a similar set of instructions. It's very easy. I set up an account. It took me less than 10 minutes to set the account up. And I think once your account is set up, you can enter your license plate of your vehicle and all that. So when you, if you're a frequent user, it's somewhat automatic when you go to pay by phone. So that's kind of phase two, which I think is good that we're doing it this way because it's not too much at once and people can kind of get accustomed to what's in front of them. But I made a note with regards to Selectmen Campbell's request. And we can certainly put, we can put a note on the kiosk letting folks know that they do not have to place the receipt on their dashboard.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Excuse me. Do you know whether the app will allow you to extend the amount of time you can stay? Or is there a four-hour maximum in any one spot?
You will be able to extend the time, sir. Yes.
And other communities are using these same kiosks? So people should be out-of-towners or in-towners who have that.
I've used them in Cambridge.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so the kiosk itself, like anything like cars, there's a bunch of different makes and models. This is, these are McKay kiosks, the same ones we've had since we've had kiosks in Rockport. So some communities use them, some communities use different ones. The way the phone app works, the way the pay-by-plate works, it's very similar. So if you've used one in one community, even though it's not a McKay, the process is very similar.
Good. Okay.
So real quick question. When Mitch screen shared the picture of the kiosk, there were instructions with it. Will those be printed on it?
So the instructions that he showed you were the ones that I just drew up as something that will get out to the businesses so they can have them in the store if they need to either refer to it or hand a copy out to the members of the public. But actually, on the kiosk itself, there's two screens. There's the one screen that you'll look at on the left-hand side that will show you the prompts to, you know, pay, press the check button, et cetera. And then there's a screen on the right-hand side. The screen on the right-hand side is where the instructions are listed.
Okay.
In the picture, it's just a, it's just a black screen. There's nothing there because we just put this kiosk in and we're still putting it together. So the instructions, you can't really see them there.
Got it. Okay.
So as you go, as you go, God, I'm sorry, Sarah.
I do think it would be helpful then to just have, you know, just a little sticker on there that says, you know, no, you don't have to, you don't have to put anything on your dashboard. Then I, yeah, yeah.
You got it.
So as you go through the prompts and you see these screens, each screen is intuitive and just kind of walks you through step by step, correct?
That's correct.
So in that regard, why can't, on the last screen where it says, you know, we've received your payment, there's no need for you to place, can you just add it on as a digital message on the machine rather than a sticker on the machine?
That would be a programming, that would be a programming question I can ask McKay. I don't know if they can do that, but I can certainly ask them.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, anything else?
So barring any objection, notice will start in the next day or so. And parking will start, pay-for-parking will start Monday, 10:00 AM.
Perfect. Excellent.
That's it for my report, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mitch.
Thanks, Chief.
Any updates from Board of Selectmen or Board of Health updates that we haven't talked about?
Yes. Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Ruth.
Okay, I just have one. I just wanted to do a clarification, what Community Preservation Committee funds can be spent on. I've heard some chatter on Facebook and around town about people mentioning that, you know, we should use CPC funds this year to help us pay some of our bills from our pandemic and those kind of things. It's just a reminder that the Department of Revenue and the state only allows CPC funds to be spent on open space preservation, preservation of historic resources, development of affordable housing, and acquisition and development of recreational facilities. It cannot be spent on budgetary things for the town. That's why when we initiated CPC in town, we, after the first year, we had it at the Springtown meeting. And it was very confusing to residents that why couldn't we spend some of those monies to help preserve teacher salaries and different things on the budget? That we made a conscious decision to always place CPC discussion at our Falltown meeting, which is not budget-related because it can never be used for those type of things. So I just wanted to get that out there so people understood that.
Thank you. When did that come in, CPC? How long ago? How many years ago was that? Any idea?
God, no. It's been, we've been through like two cycles where we, the town could have revoked it. We passed it. And we started at the first year it could be done. We started with 3% and haven't we been lucky?
Yeah, it's been a while. Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chair, just, I'm sorry, before we go to Dr. Cohen's presentation, just, there is one quick thing I did forget to mention regarding the Recreation Department Summer Fund Program.
Yep.
Discussions with the director who usually operates that program for us. And because of where we are with COVID, that, you know, the concern that the majority of the staff associated with this are students, we're not planning to operate the Summer Fund Program this season.
Okay.
Just not something that we think is in the best interest of everyone involved. So hopefully, it'll be back next year. No Summer Fund Program this summer.
That's disappointing.
Yeah, Mitch, you should also add in, so that also includes tennis and other recreation programs as well. But hopefully, back next summer better than ever.
Yep.
That's the plan. Okay, anything, Dr. Cohen? The floor is yours.
Thank you. This is a follow-up presentation from our last one. And I thought it would be helpful to focus on community-acquired cases, sort of excluding the long-term care cases in Rockport. Also, in this presentation, we've included a lot of data from Gloucester to sort of help provide context for the Rockport numbers. Again, I have to thank Brianna and Chassie for their help and input on this project. We can see here, the good news is there have been no new cases in Rockport for the last several weeks that we've heard on our weekly calls.
That's great.
This slide looks at the distribution of outcomes in Rockport and in Gloucester. The mortality rates are pretty much the same, although the numbers are small. And here, we're looking at cases by gender. And we can see that Rockport and Gloucester have pretty much the same distribution in terms of gender. And by age, when we look at Rockport cases compared to the state, you can see that the state cases are much younger than the Rockport cases. The highest proportion of Rockport cases, oh, Rockport has a much higher proportion of cases in the 60 to 69-year age group compared to the state, but a much lower proportion of our cases under the age of 50. Clearly, this is a reflection of the age distribution in Rockport compared to the state. We look a lot like Gloucester. Actually, Gloucester looks a little closer to the state than we do. Gloucester has a slightly younger population. So their proportion of cases mirrors more closely the state than it does Rockport. mirrors more closely the state than it does Rockport. In terms of hospitalization, the hospitalization rate in Rockport is much higher than in the state, although the number of community cases is relatively small. Again, this is probably a function more of the age distribution and severity in older persons. Where 25% of Rockport cases were hospitalized, but statewide only 2% of all diagnosed cases are hospitalized. This could also be due to the fact that there might be more testing of cases in the state than in Rockport. And throughout the state, they might have identified milder cases that did not require hospitalization. Compared to Gloucester, we have similar rates of hospitalization as, as Gloucester. Clearly, three quarters of our community-acquired cases have not required hospitalization. This is looking at Rockport and Gloucester, the underlying health conditions. So about a third of the cases in both Rockport and Gloucester that are required, that are acquired in the community are, are related to underlying health conditions. And in Gloucester, half of the cases have no identified underlying conditions. And Rockport, sizable proportion are still under investigation. This is a Rockport healthcare worker slide. Clearly, although again, the numbers are small, there are a lot of healthcare workers in Rockport. So almost four out of 10 cases in Rockport are to healthcare workers. Fortunately, two-thirds of those healthcare workers have already recovered from their COVID episode. And compared to Gloucester, there are more healthcare workers, a higher proportion of, of our cases are in healthcare workers, although we don't have full information on, on Gloucester cases. We have many unknown occupations. This is just to remind us, in Rockport, in the pie chart on the left, half of our cases are into residence and long-term care facilities, and half of our cases are community-acquired. And as we mentioned earlier, the good news is two-thirds of our congregate residents who've had COVID have recovered, although there was substantial mortality. This slide is, I think, very interesting, particularly the last two, or actually last three columns that focuses on testing. These are all the communities on Cape Ann. And the testing rates in Cape Ann are around five, between 5 and 6%, which is lower than the state rate of 8.8%. As we advocate for more testing closer, I think this slide demonstrates that particular need. The percent positive rate is slightly higher than the state rate in Rockport, closer to 20%, whereas the state rate is 16%. The last slide shows what I consider the, the good news. If you see, this is the percent change in cases from week to week. And you can see in Rockport, after the peak, before May 13th, the percent change in cases has declined dramatically. So the bottom line is, I, I think we're pretty much through wave one. But we still need to be incredibly cautious as we move forward because as we open up, the chances for more exposure and more infection increase. So we need to be constantly vigilant. And future presentations, I'm going, we're going to try to get data from all the communities in Cape Ann so we can have a better context for how we can use this data and how we compare throughout Cape Ann. And we'll, we'll post this, this presentation on our website tomorrow. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Cohen. Yes, Selectman Campbell? You're muted.
Okay, are we good now?
Yep.
Okay, so I, I guess, you know, thank you for all that. That was, that's very helpful, especially from my wife's perspective. She loves really seeing all this because she's in one of those high-risk categories. So it really means a lot. So thank you for those updates. But that said, preparing for, or looking at potentially preparing for a second wave of this, the key word being preparation. What can we do now, should that occur come the fall or whenever that happens to be? Hopefully it never comes. But what can we do to have a plan in place so we don't have to sit here and think about what we're going to open, what we're going to close, what we're going to do? We, we have the benefit of hindsight now, and what can we do to proactively prepare for, I'm, I'm hoping what isn't an eventuality, but we'd be foolhardy if we didn't prepare, I would think. So what, what would you say would be the best way to go about this?
Wow, that's a, it's a great question. And I'd say there are certain things we, we need to continue doing. Certainly, we need to be vigilant about social distancing and all the preventive measures we know. I think our healthcare facilities, Beverly Hospital in particular, has really, you know, stepped up to the plate and they've learned lessons around treatment. We're constantly expanding our knowledge base about COVID, understanding the, how it spreads and how infectious it is. I, you know, I think the state is going to be, you know, once it begins to take a collective breath, it will be focusing on how to prepare and prevent, if not, how to reduce the severity and impact of future cycles of this. So I don't have a definitive answer. I think testing, the more we expand testing, the better we're able to identify potential clusters. We've learned a lot about congregate living situations. We'll know, you know, we still have a lot to learn about transmission from kids. I don't know what that's going to be like when schools reopen. So I, I think we have a long way to go, but constantly our knowledge base is expanding. Hopefully there will be more protective equipment as well, so.
And, and thank you for that. But I guess by ways of a follow-up, maybe this is more of a Board of Selectmen thing with the guidance of the Board of Health. I, I really, I want to approach this in the right way. But I'm talking about the specifics of, you know, closing down whatever we might need to, whether it be parks or, or, or businesses. And of course, as you said, the state will obviously come out with whatever their recommendations are, or mandates for that matter. I'm just thinking, as we take that to the local level and look at what we do here locally in Rockport, the state can give basic guidelines. You can't social distance, wear a mask if you can't, if you're going to be within, closer than six feet. We get that. But I'm talking about bearskin neck. I'm talking about the beaches. I'm talking about, you know, the places that, that we're all concerned about now that we just spent the last hour going through reopening all of these things. I'm just looking to see if, come that time, do we have that all in place as a framework already set up? So we can just put it right into place and we don't even have to worry about it. Maybe this is probably not an answer from you to, for that, and maybe that bears out more conversation, but that's just my thought.
Yeah.
Well, I, I would, go ahead, go ahead, Dr. Cohen.
The only thing I would say is you're absolutely right. The more proactive we can be in our planning, the better prepared we will be for any eventuality. And I think we can't let up in planning because we're not, there will be, you know, if you look at the infectious rates and the low level of testing, we know there's more disease out there and the virus will determine what happens next. And we just need to be proactive and vigilant so that when we begin to see rises in, in, in rates, we can step in rapidly to make the changes that we need to, to prevent the spread.
Thank you.
And, and you know, looking down the road, if this, if there is a spike that happens in, in, in the fall, and God forbid, I hope it doesn't happen, we certainly moved very quickly, the town, by closing things and we, we, we have a kind of a template to go by if we have to do this again. And I pray that we don't have to do this again, but I, I think we were in pretty good shape making the closures as quickly as we did. Some people thought it was too quickly, but I think it was the right thing to do. So let's keep our fingers crossed and let's hope that a vaccine is down the road. Any, any, any idea about how close we are, Dr. Cohen, to a vaccine?
Well, you hear a variety of opinions. I'm not very optimistic. Well, first, COVID turns out to be a very complex coronavirus. And developing a vaccine and testing its effectiveness and distribution is really a long-term project. And we don't know whether the vaccine will work like a seasonal flu vaccine with providing limited-length immunity, or more like a polio vaccine, which provides lifelong immunity. So there are huge questions that remain unanswered about the, the impact a vaccine will have in stemming this pandemic.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know, Ron, if you have any thoughts or opinions?
No, I, I agree with, with what you've said. I, I think the benefit we'll have the next time will be hopefully that there will be more testing available so that we can make decisions based on, on more information. And I guess we can talk with Barb about how we coordinate with the hospital, you know, to kind of jump on this early and get a lot of people, you know, at our long-term care facilities, et cetera, tested early on. And then we can connect more, even more quickly than we did last time.
Okay. All right. Thank you, everyone. Anyone else for any updates from either board? Okay, hearing none. Let's go to the last item on the agenda, public comment.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry, we, we have the health agent and inspector and nurses.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Okay, health agents, any, anyone have any updates for us? Okay.
Like, no go from the nurses, nothing to report? Okay. They're all set. John?
Sure. I can give you a report of my activity to date. I've approved 30 food establishments to, to reopen. Five are bed and breakfasts or inns. And one is a new establishment. We have three inspections scheduled for Thursday afternoon. There were six establishments that had not closed, food establishments that I was asked to monitor for COVID-19 compliance, which I did, and found them all compliant. I have taken photographs of their signage and distancing, et cetera, and included for the files. And I answered seven complaints, five of which were COVID-19 related. And I think things are, things are going well. We have five food establishments that are pending word from their owners that they feel they're ready for an inspection. And whenever they are ready, the Board of Health Office has, receives contact via email or phone, and we, we schedule an inspection. I continue to field questions as I conduct the inspections and am stocked either in the establishments or on the sidewalk. And I think that these meetings on, on Zoom and, and open to people in the community have served the community well. People have, have certainly been talking to each other. And I attempt to direct people to the town website, which maintains, as, as you all know, a a section write-up, a banner that can be clicked on. And people's COVID-19 questions can be answered. And we remain at the Board of Health available to, to answer people's questions as they are brought up. Unless anybody has any questions, that's about it for me.
Mary Beth?
Yes, a question, John. Has there been any talk from the farmer's market folks about opening up anytime soon?
We have not been contacted, to my knowledge, by people associated with the farmer's market. But as soon as they do contact us, I'm available to discuss, to discuss the COVID-19 implications. It has been.
It's working its way through the other departments. I just want to collaborate, just clarify that. It, it's making its way down. It's got multiple people to hit.
This has been addressed at the state level through Massachusetts Department of Agriculture and through their various professional organizations. So I want to assure anyone associated with the local farmer's market that they are not operating in a vacuum. Not only is it, as, as Mitch said, working its way through local departments, but at state level as well.
Okay. Thank you, John. Anything else?
I just have one quick thing to add. The Board of Health today received a letter, and I just want to acknowledge it was about adding, putting toilet seat covers in the public restroom toilets to reduce potential COVID transmission. We won't have a chance to discuss this tonight, but I just want to acknowledge we received that letter and we'll address it at our next meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, last item on the agenda is public comment. We asked that Mitch will call on people. And we asked that the comments go through the chair and then you state your name and your address and what you would like to address, address either board. Go ahead, Mitch.
Hey, please use the hand raise function if you wish to speak. Okay, Charlie Seavie, address please. Just unmute yourself, Charlie. I'm clicking on the buttons for you. Okay, yep, just address, please.
Okay, Charlie Seavie, 18 Frank Street. Look, I don't know about the other beach parking lots, but Seaview Street, if you're going to provide non-resident access to Cape Head via Seaview Street, you're simply going to have to have some mechanism for out-of-town people to get stickers to go down there. Mitch, Mitch, I'm sorry, guy, the bus thing just isn't going to work. And
I, I didn't say it was the end-all be-all. I said that I was at.
But yeah, but I, you know, I mean, this is right next door to me. And I think either we got to have some provision for out-of-town people who are going to use that parking lot, or the chief is going to make the town a lot of money writing tickets. You know, as I said, I don't know about the other ones, but you're really going to have to rethink Seaview Street, I think. Thanks.
And we will, we will be, we will be discussing it down the road in the next meeting.
But just to be clear, so Seaview Street is currently resident-only parking?
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
So no, no sticker sales?
Right.
And it was anyway.
Yeah.
Resident only. Right.
It's always been so, so there really is, there really, there's no change. It's, you know, non-residents, I'm sorry, but right now we're in, we're in different circumstances. So I understand, but I think the action was. So I understand, but I think the action was prudent, but you know, we have the ability to revisit.
And we can, we could sell tickets to non-residents, stickers later down the road, but not at this point. Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
If anybody else wishes to speak, okay, Kate, just need to unmute yourself and then full name and address, please.
Hi, Kathleen Cahill, Pleasant Street. So I saw on your latest update that the, I'm sorry, a broken record here, public restrooms are open. Is that seven days a week? And is that for both T-Warf and front and back beach? And are we going to post hours at some point?
Sure, so the code red indicated all that information, that it's T-Warf in front beach, 10 a.m. to 7 p.m., seven days a week. At front beach, 10 a.m. to 8 p.m., seven days a week at T-Warf.
Is subject to change at some point or expand or, and are we going to post hours at some point?
Yes, they will be putting the hours up, but though, we put that out now in the code red, it's on the website. We'll be getting the hours out on the buildings at some point, but they are open.
So we're consistent now, yes?
They are consistent.
Okay, thank you.
Nicole Altieri, just need to unmute yourself and address, please.
Hi, Nicole Altieri, 7 Country Club Road. I was, I guess this is a question for, I'm not sure who, the Board of Selectmen or the Board of Health. I was wondering if in next week's upcoming code red call that Mitch does, that I know so many people find those really helpful and that's where people are kind of getting their main information, then Sarah tends to post them on social media. I was wondering if you would be able to specifically call out the play structures as remaining closed and also potentially the school complex remaining closed because I think there might be some confusion about that. And if we kind of consolidated all that information in one place, I don't know if that would make sense. That would be helpful.
Certainly look at how we can add that into the code red message.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Nicole. Anyone else, Mitch?
Anyone else, please use the hand raise function or raise your hand in your video. I'm going to see if we have anybody on the phone. I don't believe we do. Nope, that's it, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right, and here, anything else from either members groups? Okay, hearing none. Motion to adjourn, roll call, vote. Selectman Campbell?
I'll make the motion and aye.
Selectman Campbell votes aye. Selectman Donley?
I'll second that motion, aye.
Selectman George?
Aye.
Selectman Wilkinson?
Aye.
Mary Beth Murphy?
Aye.
Dr. Cohen?
Aye.
Dr. Newman?
Aye.
And Selectman Murphy votes aye. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.